Hello Judy.
Hi there.
How you been?
Good, how about you?
So far so good, you know, just trying to hang in there.
Yeah.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Hey Keisha, how you doing? Have you been okay?
Doing good, how's everybody?
So far so good.
Good.
Good afternoon all.
Well hello Raul, how you doing?
I'm doing good, how are you sir?
Okay, I see you haven't had a chance to up note that notation on attachment one.
That is correct sir, like I addressed with you on our Monday meeting and Monday afternoon, we will update everything for the final version that goes to the board in March on the consent. All those would be updated with that note.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome sir.
Good to see you Keisha, I just hear your voice at Laco.
I know, I wish we could have this, you know, if we had ready with help. Trying to do board meetings without face facial expressions is not easy.
That is correct.
Hello Antoinette, how you doing?
I am well, how are you?
Alright, I see our boss there, Kim is here.
You good? Yeah, I'm good, I'm good, I'm coming from as I like to say an undisclosed location. I have no idea how to, I'm, I'm, okay, anyway, good to see everyone, good to see everyone, hi Heather Lynn. I just want to say hello Sarita, welcome. Let's see, we've got a couple commissioners, Commissioner Taylor, Abdo Woods. Commissioner Segala, welcome, good to see you Carol. Craig, making a cameo appearance, nice.
We miss you Craig.
Well he's got, got all dressed up for us. Looking his best. Commissioner Martin.
Wearing a tie.
Very impressive.
Not entirely willingly, but.
Hey Peter, how you doing?
Doing well, doing well, thanks.
Good, good, nice to seeing you, all of you man, I sure miss being with all everyone. Lee, keep doing that good work.
Alright, good afternoon everybody.
Hello. Hi Sheila.
Hi there.
I'm here.
Alright, that's good.
Yeah, Kiki's at the vet. Aww.
Oh good.
Well hello Shana.
Alright, let's see Linda, how we doing commissioner wise?
We are not at quorum yet, so let's give it a couple more minutes to see if a couple more commissioners can join us.
Okay.
They give me a chance to say hello to John.
Hello Commissioner, hi everyone, good to see you.
Alright. Becca's there too, hi Becca.
Hi, good afternoon.
My goodness, Linda Aragon is there, hello Linda.
Ramalis, have you been in a cave? You sound very lonely today.
I am, you know this, this COVID is just driving me crazy because I can't get out and see people and do things and everything, so yeah, it's kind of depressing.
Well you should get out and see people, just stay at a big distance and wear a mask.
Well thank you Sheila, thank you.
That's what I do. And then we text, we text each other across the park, you know what I mean?
I hear you, I hear you.
We do have quorum now Judy, so we can begin when you're ready.
Okay, well I will call this meeting to order and ask Linda to read the ground rules for this meeting.
Thank you Judy, good afternoon members of the board and public, I'm Linda Voe and before we begin today's meeting, I just wanted to go over some important information, as you know under AB 361, members of the first five LA Board of Commissioners or staff may participate in this meeting via teleconference during declared emergencies through January 1st 2024. And in the interest of maintaining appropriate social distancing, members of the public may observe this meeting telephonically or otherwise electronically as posted on our website and this agenda. Now regarding public comments, there are two ways to submit public comment and the first way is written public comment via email and these must be submitted in advance of the meeting via email to LVO@first5la.org by 1:30pm the day of the meeting in order for them to be read aloud during the meeting and as a reminder, public comments emailed should indicate the item number the comment corresponds with. And any public comment received after 1:30pm will become a part of public records. Now during the meeting, the second way is public members can use the Q and A chat function to express an interest in speaking to an item. It is important that these requests to speak be submitted via the Q and A chat box function before the item being commented on is being presented. And when submitting requests to speak, public members are being asked to only provide his or her name and the item number the comment corresponds with. All public comments received during the meeting via the Q and A chat box will be assessed in the order they are received. And when you do hear your name called on by myself, you will be given the ability to speak during the meeting. And if we don't hear from you regarding beginning your public comment, when your name is called, we will call your name one more time before moving on to the next public comment. Two minutes will be allotted for each comment and once two minutes have passed for each comment, we will move on to the next public comment. And before we begin today's meeting, just a few reminders, to minimize background disruptions, all board members and staff should place their lines on mute until called upon to speak and to minimize multiple people speaking at the same time and to ensure for a coherent dialogue, all board members, if you would like to speak to an item while Judy is still chairing, then please raise your hand or use the chat box function. Now, once the chair does begin, we will go back to texting and raise your hand or chat box and I will coordinate with the chair to coordinate those board responses. Now outside of adjournment, which will be called by the chair, roll call will be done for all action items. And again, a reminder to all board members to take yourselves off mute prior to speaking and during roll call. If technical assistance is required during the meeting, please contact me at 213-276-9389 and I will connect you to IT. And with that, I will now hand this back to our Vice Chair Judy Abdo.
Hi everybody, welcome to the meeting and I want to welcome Sarita, I think this might be your first actual board meeting.
It is, thank you.
Well, we're glad you're here and we're very happy to see Craig here with you, so, or not with you maybe, but at the same meeting.
Making a cameo appearance, yes.
We have lots of legal expertise with us today. So, do we have to have a roll call?
Yes, and I can begin that.
Okay.
Thank you, Judy Abdo.
Here.
Linda Aragon.
Here.
Astrid Hager.
Here.
Yvette Martinez.
Here.
Frank Romels.
Here.
Carol Segala.
Here.
Ramalis Taylor.
Here.
Keisha Woods.
Here.
Robert Byrd.
Here.
Carla Plitez Howell.
Here.
Jacqueline McCroskey.
Here.
Deanne Tilton.
Here.
And Sheila Kuehl.
Here.
Quorum is present.
Okay, so we have a quorum and the first order of business for this new year is to nominate a chair for, sorry, my ring is speaking here. To nominate a chair for the next year, do I have any?
I nominate Sheila Crew for chair.
Okay, we have a nomination for Sheila, are there any others? Is there a second? Okay, Yvette says yes, she is seconding, alright, so. If there are no other nominations, I think we can just say that by acclamation Sheila Kuehl is our chair for another year. Anybody have any problem with that? I see no problems happening, Sheila, I'm handing it over to you again.
Thank you so much Judy, I have a 20 minute speech of acceptance and I guess I'll, I'll pick up my medal when I stand on the podium later. Thank you all so much for, seriously for entrusting me with this for my last year in office and my last year then at First Five. So our next order of business is to elect a vice chair, do I have any nominations for vice chair?
This is Yvette, hi, I nominate Judy Abdo.
Alright Judy Abdo is nominated, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, are there any other nominations for vice chair? Seeing none, are there any objections to re-electing Judy Abdo as vice chair by acclamation, any objections? Hearing no objections, it is so ordered, congratulations Judy, once again, serve as vice chair of the commission and therefore also a chair of the executive committee. So, thank you all very much, I seriously appreciate that and let us then move on to our consent calendar. Does any commissioner wish to remove anything from the consent calendar? Okay, are, is there any public comment on the consent calendar?
There are no public comments on the consent calendar.
Alright then, may I have a motion to adopt the consent calendar?
So moved, this is Judy.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anybody? Alright, thank you, we have, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar, please call the roll to approve the consent calendar.
Judy Abdo?
Yes.
Linda Aragon?
Yes.
Astrid Hager?
Yes.
Yvette Martinez?
Yes.
Frank Romels?
Yes.
Carol Segala?
Yes.
Ramalis Taylor?
Yes.
Keisha Woods?
Yes.
And Sheila Kuehl?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Alright, thank you all very much, the next item on the agenda are whatever thoughts the brand new chair has, so let me dig into that, before I talk about any of my sort of thoughts for the new year, I'm very pleased to announce the confirmation of committee assignments for 2022. Commissioners should have received an email with a copy of their new assignments, the assignments will also be posted on the First Five website following the meeting. I want to particularly thank and congratulate Astrid, who is our new chair of the program and planning committee and Jacqueline McCroskey, our new, or our vice chair of PPC. And also to congratulate Ramalis Taylor, our chair of the budget and finance committee and Dr. Ferrer, who having so much free time on her hands, has agreed to be the vice chair of budget and finance. Judy Abdo is the chair of our executive committee and Yvette Martinez, the vice chair. So thank you, thank you all of you for agreeing to take on this leadership for this upcoming year. So I want to welcome our board, our First Five LA staff, everyone listening in from the public and mostly the families that First Five LA serves, including our zero to five age children, to our first meeting of 2022, 2022 sounds like we should be having colonies on the moon and interstellar flight, but no, it's just the next year after 2021. But we still have a pretty deep responsibility on our hands here at First Five and I think we can feel very good about the many ways that we've supported our families throughout these last two years of the pandemic. I just celebrated a birthday recently and was thinking about family because those of us who are fortunate enough to have families or had families or have chosen families, also really I think appreciate what it means to have support for our families and it's not just money, it really goes way beyond that in terms of the things that really kind of make it work, whether it's our outside work friends, whether it's our social friends, whether it's people who just step up, you know, when we're out, I don't know, playing softball and they fetch the ball for us and give us a big smile or whether it's just our children's teachers, friends of our kids themselves, just random acts of kindness from people that we know that I think are the kind of support that really, really helps us maintain our families and thrive. And that is a big part of what First Five does as well. Because in a lot of ways, I think things have felt really out of control over the past couple of years. But First Five has held strong to our North Star, trying to, you know, to keep up the image, steer the boat, stay on course. And as we know, at the very beginning of our, what we didn't know was going to be such a long time dealing with COVID, we pivoted immediately to play a really critical role in the county's ECE COVID-19 response and recovery plan. You know Becca and her whole team stepped in immediately with a good deal of expertise, leadership, advocacy for our ECE community, leading meetings, being problem solvers, both for families and for family childcare providers. So I want to extend a lot of gratitude from all of us to all, to all the staff at First Five and leadership at First Five for everything you've done since the beginning of this seemingly endless pandemic. And while we continue to support recovery, we're also looking forward even beyond a hoped-for recovery as well. Today's agenda will demonstrate our ability to continuously adjust our budget to meet every rising challenge, thinking about our plan for succession. We also have a wonderful opportunity for learning more about diversity, equity and inclusion work, layering on the concept of targeted universalism. I don't want to give too many spoiler alerts, but this is a, going to be a really, really wonderful and interesting presentation. I must say though, no matter how long our health crisis extends, First Five LA will keep up its efforts, keep working to support each other and our families and all of our service providers who are so important to the effort. So under our capable and leadership by Kim and John, we're going to continue to forge a path, support each other and really foster those extended friendships that I think make any organization work, make any family work and frankly, hopefully, make the world work. So with that, let me turn it, oh I'm sorry, are there any public comments on the chair's comments?
There are no public comments on the chair's comments.
And I have no comment then on that comment and let me turn then to Kim Belche, who is a really fine leader and a lot taller than I am, over to you Kim.
Let me reflect on that comment, thank you Sheila and happy new year as well to commissioners. It does seem odd to be saying that in February, but this is our first virtual meeting of the full board and it is terrific to see such a robust representation of our board to kick off the new year. Also want to acknowledge, we are at happy birthday plus one day to our chair supervisor Kuehl and hopefully you got a few electronic birthday wishes and thoughts. Thank you Linda for helping facilitate that with our, our board as well as the team as a whole. It's fun to celebrate and thank you for giving us that gift of celebration of you. And congratulations to our board leadership, I appreciate our colleague stepping up and into those new roles and really critical to helping steer and advance our work over the course of the next year. And also in that context, want to acknowledge and recognize Commissioner Martinez for having chaired budget and finance for a number of years and doing so with such thought and integrity and commitment to ensuring that we are living, doing our best to. There we go, to help support our ability to move towards right sizing our financial picture and really appreciate the good comments and questions and support throughout your tenure. I'm coming to you all by way of First Five LA, 750 North Alameda, our building still exists and I had an opportunity today to look really, really good in my hard hat as we, a small group of us, wearing facial protection, wearing hats, flat shoes because we went up on the roof, had an opportunity to do a tour of the building and see firsthand the progress being made as a result of capital improvement project supported by the board. And you know, it's, it's, it's been labor and time and resource intensive, but really good progress is being made and delighted to see that we are on, on a path with a little bit of support and attention from the city of LA, which holds a very important power of permit approval, that the finishing pieces are coming into place, so really want to commend Jasmine Frost, our interim chief operating officer for her steady leadership and support and Tamisha Williamson, who's just been intimately involved as well as a number of our colleagues throughout the organization. So eager to return to the organ, return to the office safely before too long and we'll look to the ED update for some information about kind of how the CIP project is coming along and we're hopefully going to spend some time at our meeting in March to talk with the board further about CIP and the return to work and how we're approaching hybrid work for First Five LA and the team. Today, what I wanted to do is say a few comments to really set the stage for how we are using our time with the board and the initial touchpoints at the board and committee level and how that, that is really foundational to who we are, how we show up and the contribution we make to the very issues that Sheila just spoke to in her opening comments. And to help frame how we approach structuring our early meetings, I wanted to remind the board that we have identified three priorities, three strategic priorities for implementation of our strategic plan. Number one, focus and priority setting, recognizing that strategy is as much about what we don't do as what we do do and we have a clear strategic plan and even within that, we have a need to focus and prioritize further. Second is integration and alignment, we know children and families don't exist in the context of siloed systems, but at the intersection of systems and so we have a real need and imperative for First Five LA to better align and integrate our work within First Five LA as well as our work alongside family-serving systems to greater benefit and impact for children and families. And third is diversity, equity and inclusion, our newest investment guideline and, and value. So those three strategic priorities have really been central to our thinking about how change occurs and how First Five LA can contribute to change at a scale that is aligned with our bold goal, the North Star that Sheila spoke to, that all children enter kindergarten ready to succeed in school and life. And those priorities, integration, focusing, centering DEI, do require us, including with the board, to think about how we do our work together and looking for opportunities to approach our work in new ways, to reflect on how we show up within our organization with one another as well as with those we work alongside, as well as to think about what mind shift, mindsets need to shift in the context of evolving environmental forces and which have implications for our work. So PPC, a couple months, a couple weeks ago, was a really good example of First Five LA, the team wanting to uplift for the board examples of how we are approaching our work differently and how we are doing so in a way to bring more clarity to our focus, opportunities for alignment and centering of DEI. We heard from the Center for Children and Family, Child and Family Impact, CCFI, from the leadership team about some concrete examples of efforts that we are undertaking in a couple of areas. One to strengthen and integrate family-serving systems to support more integration and prevention orientation and we heard of some examples of how we are contributing to efforts to better integrate families, supporting, family strengthening systems such as home visiting with family-supporting systems more broadly. And we heard about some, some efforts to better align our work with Help Me Grow, our early intervention and then early identification and intervention investment with our home visiting supports. And we also heard about our work in our efforts in the area of aligning systems with community-identified priorities and the team lifted up some specific examples of community-identified priorities being connected with and helping to shape and inform the work of county, county systems leaders and doing it so in a way that's bringing the voice and the lived experience of our best start parents to really help engage in a way that is helping the systems work at our county level, be better connected with and informed by the voice of parents. At March, we're going to dedicate time focusing on our fiscal imperative and we're going to talk about our fiscal context, our long-term financial projections and the implications of our financial realities for development of our budget that we'll bring to the board in the spring for FY 2223 as well as our work beyond. We are an asset-rich organization and we have some financial realities that as a public agency, we have a responsibility to manage too, so we want to have some, some deep dialogue with the board and use that to help kind of better understand our context, help us focus and prioritize and ensure that what we bring to the board from a budget perspective is representing our best thinking about the highest, best, highest, best and highest use of our staff talent, our financial resources and our time. Finally, is today and we're going to spend the bulk of our time today talking about diversity, equity and inclusion, which is one of the three strategic areas that, that I mentioned. We've talked with the board about how our values are core to who we are, how we do our work, how we show up and the impact we seek. And we've also shared with the board the, the deep work that the team has been undertaking over the course of the past year plus to really strengthen our capacity to really live and lean into, lean into and live our DEI values so that our DEI values are really infused in our policy, our practice, our culture. And the board is an important part of that conversation. Infusing and living DEI is a responsibility for all of us at an individual, collective, organizational, societal level. And I want to commend Antoinette, who's our chief transformation officer for really conceptualizing and leading this work from an org-wide perspective, our staff-led diversity, equity and inclusion governance board, which is hard at work and really the team broadly that is leaning in, participating and helping inform and shape the concrete recommendations that are going to be emerging from this. the concrete recommendations that are going to be emerging from this work. The board is a part of this work, an important part of this work. From your personal experience, your professional experience, we're eager to have a number of touchpoints with the board this year specifically focused on DEI, building upon the initial touchpoint of last October. So today, as our Chair shared, we're going to have the benefit of hearing from our seed collaborative partners, Evan Holland and John Powell, who are co-founders. And John, in particular, is going to spend some time with the board talking about the targeted universalism framework. I'm not going to steal his thunder or Antoinette's, but as the supervisor said, it's a super creative, thoughtful, and powerful way of approaching equity, approaching our work both within First 5 LA and external to First 5 LA, and really has a potential to address some really critical inequities in society, whether they be racial, class, geographic. So eager to engage with John and listen to and learn from him and engage with one another. And as we consider the year ahead, I really want to encourage the board to join the team in bringing an orientation to the imperatives that we further prioritize and focus our work to greater impact. We seek, see, and seize opportunities to align and integrate within our organization as well as with our systems partners more broadly. And finally, that we really infuse and embed DEI in all that we do. And taken together, I think that is, those areas of focus are really essential to our ability to accelerate our impact and make contribution. And that's the work ahead, and that's realizing the promise that the supervisor spoke to. So eager to roll up our sleeves and get to it, and hopefully do so in person before too long. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Kim. Very, very thought-provoking and informative. Linda, do we have any public comment on Kim's comments?
There are no public comments on Kim's comments.
All right, thank you. Then let's move to the next item, which is about our succession plan. I'm going to turn this back to you, Kim, to introduce and bring anyone else in that you bring in for the presentation. Thanks.
Thank you. As commissioners will recall, as a part of my 2020 goals for the year, I had identified developing an executive succession plan as a goal. 2020 became kind of a crazy year, and so we held that over for 2021. And so, consistent with that objective and consistent with what is an organizational best practice to have a succession plan in place, I'm bringing to the board for its consideration a draft executive succession plan with the intent that informed by this discussion, we'll come back to the board in March for approval. The context for plan, as I said, is my goals. Number one, those goals were predicated upon an understanding that in organizational best practice is to have in place a plan for the eventuality, a potential eventuality of change in executive leadership. That change can be short-term in nature, it can be long-term in nature. It can be planned, it can be unplanned. But regardless, change is inevitable in all organizations, and smart organizations that focus on governance and strengthening their capacity to maintain stability of operations in any circumstance are smart to have a plan in place. So the plan envisions that, in the context of a short-term absence, the Executive Vice President, which is currently John Wagner, would serve as the Acting Executive Director. In the case of a permanent change in leadership, the plan is intended to ensure continuity and accountability until such time as there is permanent leadership identified. And so, given the fact that the board's overarching responsibility is for identification and hiring, selection of an executive director, that task would fall to the board and the executive committee to really undertake a more formal search process, working closely with the Chief Counsel, as has been happening in the past. So again, this is a best practice. The approach that I'm suggesting First 5 LA take is very consistent with best practices across a diversity of organizations. And I commend the board's consideration and hopefully approval at the next meeting. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you. Since I can't see you raise your hand, Judy, perhaps you would call on people who show a raised hand if they want to ask a question? Or you can, or Linda Vo can text me for whatever, but however it works the best. Anyone, Judy, anyone have their hands up to be called on to comment on this item?
Not that I see.
Anybody first thoughts, second thoughts, or questions?
No one has their hand up.
All right, well, Kim, I thank you very much for this. I think, you know, the members of this board, the commissioners on this board belong to a lot of other organizations, and it's, to me, it's been a running theme about whether or not we even think about what's going to, you know, what's going to happen. In many official organizations, there is already a succession plan in governments, for instance, but in many nonprofits or foundations, there aren't. So I think this is a really, really good and important undertaking. Thank you and your team immensely for doing it. It is best practice to think about. Commissioners, this is an information item, which will come back to the board. So if you think of any questions or issues or anything you wish that you had asked during the meeting, please contact Kim or John to follow up, and we'll go forward. Is there any public comment on this issue, Linda?
There are no public comments on this item.
All right, great. Thank you so much. All right, then let's move forward to something important, and not only to Kim, and that is the discussion of the contract for 2022 for our Executive Director. I'm going to, though Sarita is officially our counsel, I've been told that Craig will present this item, which will not be voted on today. It's an information item. It will come back on consent next month. So Craig, let me turn this over to you, and it's really nice to see you even virtually when I don't see you. You know what I mean? Over to you.
Thank you, Chair. Members of the board, it's nice to be back like the proverbial bad penny. Here I am again. But I am here to speak about the Executive Director's employment contract. As you all know, she, Ms. Belchay, works for you under a three-year employment contract, which runs currently through the end of January in 2023. When we did this contract version back at the end of 2018, we left for later the determination of what the salary amount would be in 2022. Executive Director Belchay declined to take a salary increase in 2021, given the uncertainties of the pandemic-related fiscal issues. And so, her current salary has been in effect since the beginning of 2020. So, under the contract, the board was to meet and confer with her to determine a salary for 2021. Board delegated that to the executive committee at the end of last year. And after some discussions with the Executive Director, the executive committee is recommending that the board approve a 5% salary increase, and that would take her salary to $339,227.62, beginning retroactive to February 1st, if the board approves this amendment at your next meeting. I've spoken to the Executive Director about this. She has indicated that she's in agreement with this increase and appreciates it. And so, this is an information item. It's also the requirement of the Brown Act that before any compensation item for an executive in local government is approved, that there be a public announcement of what the proposed compensation would be. So this is that open session discussion as required by the Brown Act. There is no other change proposed to the terms of her employment contract. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, and if there are no questions, then you can expect to see the matter before the board for approval at your next meeting.
All right, thank you, Counsel. Are there any questions or comments on this item? Judy, do you see any hands raised?
Yes, Ramalos has his head up.
All right, Ramalos, go ahead.
I just want to have one thing to say. Long overdue. Thank you, Kim, for an outstanding job of what you've done in the leadership of this organization and everything like that. And I just say, well deserved. Thank you, thank you, thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Well, I think if we were in other climes, we would all sing for "She's a Jolly Good Fellow" or something, whatever they do, to second your comments, but I certainly second them. Anyone else with their hands up, Judy?
No, I don't see anybody.
All right. I don't know whether our Executive Director wanted to say anything. I don't see that in my notes, but I wanted to certainly give you the opportunity to say yea or nay about if you want to have any comments.
And actually, for conflict of interest reasons, she can't participate in this item, so...
Oh, all right. Well, Counsel, I wish I'd gone to law school somewhere.
A practice at a law firm.
Like yours, for instance.
For instance.
People don't know I'm an alumni of your law firm. Anyway, I certainly didn't do them proud with that comment, so never mind. Seeing no other comments from commissioners, are there any public comments on this item?
There are no public comments on this item.
All right. Commissioners, this was an information item to make public the proposed amendment, which will be on our agenda at the March meeting. So let us move then to the next item, which is our mid-year revised budget and the fiscal year 2122 budget calendar. And I think we go to Daisy and Raul for this presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon, members of the board, to the members of the public, and of course, our staff and our colleagues across the organization. For this afternoon, we have several items that are before you. Our focus will be to present a succinct presentation of the fiscal year 2122 mid-year budget adjustment and to bring to your attention the fiscal year 2223 budget calendar, Item 90, which is included in your packet for you as information item. A more detailed and expanded presentation of the adjustments and timeline was provided at the February 7th Budget and Finance Committee meeting. At that time, we communicated that these adjustments that were before them and now before you reflect an organization-wide perspective that is informed from a collaborative approach led by the finance team with the entire leadership team and staff across the organization. These adjustments were diligently analyzed, and the net outcome represents the final resources for fiscal year 2122. I would also like to acknowledge the finance team for their contribution, the entire staff for their collaboration in this process, and to those commissioners who attended our committee meeting this week, and specifically, our Chair Commissioner Martinez. I really want to say thank you for the last several years as your chairmanship to our Budget and Finance Committee. And of course, thank you for your partnership and the collaboration that you have bestowed on this for the last few years. I will now pass it to Daisy to provide you with, again, a succinct presentation of the overall adjustments for 2122.
Thank you, Raul. Good afternoon, Commissioners, staff, and guests. As Raul noted, today's mid-year budget adjustment presentation will be a high-level overview of the fiscal year 2122 mid-year budget adjustments and revised budget, as well as revenue updates and next steps in this process. We begin with some of the key takeaways summarizing this year's adjustments. The nearly two-year-long COVID-19 public health emergency has impacted activities originally proposed for fiscal year 2122, both with augmentations to respond to the various needs triggered by the pandemic and decreases due to obstacles and challenges posed by the pandemic in executing activities as originally planned. Budget estimates were also updated to reflect new information or changing circumstances, including project timeline reassessments and alignment to actual spending trends consistent with previous years. And finally, reflective of our continued commitment to partnerships, collaboration, and less reliance on Proposition 10 funding, we have received additional funding to support our work in home visiting and the African-American Infant and Maternal Mortality Communications Initiative. And we will be hearing more about these themes as they arise throughout this presentation. Before we review the changes to the budget, however, we wanted to briefly remind the Commission that the purpose of the mid-year adjustment process is an opportunity to refine the program and operating budget estimates, both upward and downward, based on new developments, since the budget was originally developed several months prior. It is also an opportunity to communicate any changes to the revenue. Additionally, our process adheres to the guardrails outlined by existing budgetary board policies. And based on these policy parameters, the fiscal year 2122 mid-year revised budget will be presented to the board for approval. So turning to our budget estimates, this table summarizes the results of the proposed mid-year adjustments at a high level, the net outcome of which is a downward adjustment of just over $3.9 million in anticipated expenditures for the fiscal year. This is the result of a nearly $3.9 million downward adjustment to the program budget, representing a 4.2% net change to the overall fiscal year 2122 program budget, as well as an approximately $27,000 downward adjustment to the operating budget, representing a 1/10 of a percent net change to the 2122 operating budget. The proposed downward adjustment to the 2020-2028 Strategic Plan budget component, which includes the Center for Child and Family Impact, the Office of Government Affairs and Public Policy, the Office of Communications, and the Office of Data for Action, is just over $1.6 million. This net adjustment is driven by shifts in spending across various investments, but is primarily the result of adjustments in response to the ongoing pandemic, activity timeline shifts, updates based on year-to-date spending, as well as new funding and corresponding costs. This new funding includes Medi-Cal Managed Care Plan funds to offset our investment in select home visiting programs and welcome baby hospitals, as well as funds from the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health to lead a strategic communication initiative in support of the African-American Infant and Maternal Mortality Countywide Birth Disparities Work. The mid-year adjustment to legacy investments is due to the additional funding little by little obtained from another source to offset First 5 LA's investment and their effort towards sustainability. The downward adjustment to Emerging Opportunities Fund, which represents the centralized funding intended to support emerging opportunities or needs in the fiscal year, is informed by our ongoing experience and reflective of our actual anticipated need for the year based on year-to-date spending and org-wide leadership feedback. Adjustments to the operating budget, which include both upward and downward changes to estimated spending by line items and cost categories based on revised anticipated need for the remainder of the fiscal year, the net result of which is a downward adjustment of approximately $27,000 to the operating budget. The most substantial changes to the operating budget are within the personnel expenses, professional services, and travel expense cost categories, and are primarily in response to the COVID-19 pandemic with projected line item savings free purpose to offset more immediate needs. Given all these adjustments, the net effect translates to a nearly 3.5% net change to the overall fiscal year 2122 budget, a revised budget that is refined and aligned to reflect the best use of our resources for fiscal year 2122 in support of the children and families in our communities. This table further illustrates the adjustments proposed within the Strategic Plan budget component. More information related to the program adjustments is included in the memo and program summary, Attachment 1, included in today's materials. Again, the adjustments within the... Again, the adjustments within the operating cost categories resulted in a net downward adjustment of 1/10 of a percent to the total operating budget chiefly influenced by the COVID-19 pandemic. Additional details are included in the memo and operating summary, attachment two, included in today's materials. The adjustments to the operating budget not impact the total approved administrative cost of $14.1 million. However, as a result of the adjustments in program spending, the percentage relative to annual spending increased from 12.37% to 12.81% of the total budget. Moving on to revenue updates illustrated in this table is a summary of changes in anticipated revenue for fiscal year 2122. The first revenue estimate column in this table reflects the total projected revenues for fiscal year 2122 as shared in the long-term financial plan in June 2021 for a total of just over $76 million, which includes approximately $5.1 million in other alternative revenues. The second revenue estimate column reflects the revised estimated revenues with a projected increase to Proposition 10, Proposition 56 funding per the latest projections from CDTFA, as well as additional funding from the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health and Medi-Cal Managed Care Plan, totaling $435,000 received and approved after the approval of the fiscal year 2122 budget for a revised total of nearly $85 million in projected revenues for fiscal year 2122, nearly $5.6 million, of which is alternative funding. These changes represent a roughly $6 million increase in anticipated revenues for fiscal year 2122. And we are highlighting these funds since we are using the mid-year process to reconcile and align earlier fiscal year 2122 board action to this year's revised budget. Our next and final step in this process is to submit these adjustments and revise budget for approval on consent at the March 10th meeting of the Board of Commissioners. We will also update the long-term financial plan with the revised fiscal year 2122 budget and revenue estimates. These changes to the plan will be shared with the board in conjunction with the presentation of the fiscal year 2223 budget in May and June of this year. And now I will turn it back to Raul to close.
Thank you, Daisy. And before I hand it over back to the chair, as the Director of Finance, I want to acknowledge that the presentation before you is a very narrow focus and only represents a perspective of the current budget year. It is important to note, and as Kim noted earlier in her opening remarks, we will be returning to provide you with an overview of the organization's financial position and to remind us of our fiscal imperative as we transition into the development of the 2223 budget development process. Please be looking forward to that presentation in March. In addition, we acknowledge that the presentation was short and sweet for today. And for those commissioners that weren't able to attend the Budget and Finance Committee meeting, we would like to extend an invitation. And please feel free to reach out to us directly and we will be more than happy to set up a one-on-one and walk you and, you know, go more into the weeds related to some of these adjustments that are before you. Again, this is an information item and we'll be taking it to the full board next month through the consent calendar. I will now pass it back to the chair and open it up for questions.
Raul, thank you very, very much. And Daisy, thank you for the presentation. Judy, do you see anyone with their hand up for comments or questions on this item?
No, I don't.
Okay, I think that probably means that we all understand literally the ups and downs in the various areas and very much appreciate the flexibility. I have to say I'm very, very pleased about the speaking out and gaining new additional non-prop 10 funding from Medi-Cal Managed Care Plans and Public Health. It really is appropriate because we were covering, I think, some costs that were appropriately allocated to them, but of course, they would have to wait for us to demand it, which we finally did in a nice way. And that helps, I think, a lot. So as was offered, if anybody has any second thoughts or questions, you're not quite sure how to formulate yet, but you want to talk to Raul or Daisy before the March meeting, please feel free to reach out because they did offer to do a one-on-one with anybody with any questions. So if there are no other commissioner questions or comments, Linda, is there any public comment on this item?
There are no public comments on this item.
All right. Well, we're chugging right along and we have a really great presentation coming up. So as we're required to do for our, so our record keepers can take a little break and stretch their fingers. We'll take a 10-minute break right now. Let's say it's 2:20 and we'll come back at 2:30 for the diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging and targeted universalism presentation and discussion. So come back at 2:30. We're on break. Thank you. Okay, the hour of 2:30 having arrived. We shall reconvene. Hope everyone is so refreshed from their break. Thank you so much. And let us move then to our next item. I think, Antoinette, are you going to kick this off?
Yes, I am. So good afternoon. Thank you. So good afternoon, Madam Chair, commissioners, colleagues and members of the public. I am Antoinette Andrews-Bush and I'm the Chief Transformation Officer for First Five L.A. Before I provide some context for today's session, I'm excited and so very pleased to introduce Ashley Griffith, who is our new Senior Strategist for Diversity, Equity and Inclusion in the Office of Equity Strategy and Learning. So Ashley says she'll wave and reserve her comments in the coming months when commissioners will hear directly from her, but I wanted to take an opportunity to introduce her. So today I am joined by two of our partners from the SEED Collaborative, who have been supporting First Five L.A. in our DEI journey. John Powell is a co-founder of the SEED Collaborative and is the Director of the Othering and Belonging Institute at the University of California, Berkeley. John will be today's lead presenter. The board is familiar with Evan Holland, who has previously presented to the board, and Evan is also a co-founder of the SEED Collaborative. Evan and I have been reflecting on our board presentations in March and October of last year. In those presentations, we shared an overview of SEED's work with us. We uplifted the interplay between the way we operate internally and our externally facing work. We've shared data from SEED's due diligence efforts and highlighted the work underway led by staff at various levels across the organization to identify ways to integrate DEI more fully into our organizational policies, practices and procedures. Now, while these have been good process updates to the board, we've heard from commissioners, you've raised questions about what DEI means and what it means to First Five L.A. in particular. Commissioners have been clear that we need to live what we say, which means we have to examine our own attitudes, philosophies and behaviors. Commissioners have articulated a desire to deepen the board's DEI knowledge and competency and center DEI in your governance role as a commission. And as we reflected on this, and as Kim noted in her opening remarks, the partnership between the board and staff is critical in this work. Staff and commissioners alike are all entering this space with different life and professional experiences, varied understandings and different perspectives. We all come to this work with a shared commitment to do better, and these are all strengths upon which we can build. So today's conversation is not a process update. We will provide process updates to the board in the coming months. Today, we invite the board into a collective dialogue about DEI concepts and language, which are foundational to our work moving forward. This 90-minute session on DEI, belonging and targeted universalism is a beginning of a series of board learning opportunities that mirror learning opportunities for First Five L.A. staff over the course of this calendar year. So I now want to invite Evan to orient commissioners to today's session. Evan?
Thank you, Antoinette, and good afternoon, everyone. So happy to be with you again and see you all again. As Antoinette shared, in a moment, I'm going to pass the room to John, the virtual room to John, to take us through the learnings of what is diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging and this framework called targeted universalism by which you can execute your DEI work. I just want to punctuate the points that Antoinette's shared by saying that the goal of this training is to support the commission in advancing its DEI strategic priority by baselining your language and concept understanding, so that we're all speaking the same language and speaking with one understanding when thinking about DEI in the coming months of this work. And this is the first of three trainings. We'll be back later in the year with two additional trainings. Staff are also going to be receiving three trainings this year. And so our goal here is to really just build the acumen and understanding of these concepts, so everyone is ready to wield them in their day-to-day work as commissioners and as staff. The presentation, just for your understanding, the presentation you're going to see is SEED's perspective on these topics. And so it And so it it's based on our expertise and our lived experience. And uh upon the completion of the presentation, we're really excited to not only answer your questions, but really hear your reflections about what you see in the presentation, what you hear from John. And and this is really an opportunity for you to uplift, what does DEI mean to you? So staff um had the opportunity to uplift their thoughts on what DEI meant to them as a part of the due diligence process, which we shared the last time we were here, the results of which we shared the last time we were here. And so really want to hear from Commissioners today on this point. And hearing both staff and Commissioner perspectives on what DEI means to you will help First Five just advance um its understanding of what DEI is for the organization at large. So with that and without any further ado, I'm so happy to introduce the awesome John Powell, uh, co-founder of CEDE collaborative and Director of the Othering and Belonging Center. John, I'll pass it to you to share your screen, introduce yourself and take it away.
Thank you, Evan, and thank all of you and Madam Commissioner, Madam Chair. Um, so I'm gonna be sharing a lot with you today and um and then I look forward to a chance to go back and forth. Um, just by way of background, I I teach at Berkeley and um I run the institute, but I'm also one of the early um uh, I guess, people who sort of brought equity into the public discourse in the early 90s. And I'm sort of amazed thirty years later how prominent it is. If you go back uh fifteen years, uh, you won't see DEI uh for the most part. So and it's not just change in language. I think it's a change in our understanding of who we are. And that change is never complete, uh, because we're never complete. We're always growing. We're always changing. Um, sometimes it's difficult, sometimes it's not, um, but it never stops. So this is part of that journey to sort of both look at, look back a little bit, look at where we are and look forward. And as we do that, I'm gonna try to share my screen and I had it up before. Let's see. I think this is it. Okay, yes, that's it. Hopefully you can see that. I'm going to presenter mode or um. Great, and I hope you're, those of you who are in the LA area, I hope you're um managing the heat down there. We have heat up here in the Bay Area where I am, but it was even hotter there. Uh, first of all, I want to just again thank you for the chance to uh share with you, but also for the work that you do, which I think is just so critically important, both to LA County, uh, California and really the whole country. Uh, and then thank you for letting CEDE um um in a small way help you as you do this work. This is a little bit who I am. Um, and we talked about that some, but I will just say, the institute is fairly large. Uh, we have uh about hundred and forty professors at Berkeley. Uh, we have a staff of about seventy. We do work, um, we apply research, we do work all over the United States and the world. Um, and we do original research. Uh, we have at least one, maybe more Nobel laureates as part of the institute. Um, and we think, uh, in a sense, no pun intended, the institute was made for this moment. Let me see if I can move this. So equity now is a word that actually has become a household word, although some people still stumble over it. Um, so equity is about fairness and justice and it's achieved uh to address systematic disparities. And um, and it's important, these disparities are important in terms of trying to figure out, excuse me, what's not working and what's not working at home, but I'm also suggest it's limited. And uh, maybe not you to consider equity 2.0 or targeted universalism.
John, I think you skipped diversity. Do you wanna go back a couple of slides and just cover that before you?
Sure, I'm just trying to. Okay, yes, moving through my slides, okay. So, thank you, Evan. Um, so we talked a little bit about equity, let's go back to diversity. And diversity is really descriptive. It doesn't really tell you how to behave. So anytime you have a group of people from different backgrounds, different identities, uh, and it can be inherent, it can be acquired identities, uh, you have diversity. Having diversity doesn't tell you anything about, is it fair? Uh, is it appropriate? Um, the power relationships are just basically saying, we have a group of human beings that aren't diverse. And even that um terminology is a little bit misguided because uh uh there's one Nobel laureate, Emeril Sand, who basically says homogeneity is a myth, meaning that you really never have a homogeneous group. You can always slice and dice groups up based on different characteristics. So really, when we talk about diversity, we're talking about social characteristics that in some way is important in people's lives and society. Uh, and so some differences are there, but irrelevant. Uh, some differences are there and they're extremely important. So we're talking about the latter. Um, and there are, and around those differences, we have identities. And they're inherent identities or identity traits really, um, that we're born with and they're acquired identities. Uh, so now I'm a um part of uh the golden bears. That becomes part of my identity, but that's acquired. I wasn't before I came to Berkeley, uh, but I was African-American male. Um, the importance of that, though, is not just, is not just located in me, it's located in how society responds to these different identities. We talked a little bit about equity, um, and so I'll move on. And so inclusion, DEI, what is inclusion? Inclusion is the act of um telling people that they have the right to participate. But inclusion uh is different than belonging. So TU, which we'll get to in a minute, target universalism, is equity 2.0, belonging is inclusion 2.0. Uh, so inclusion is you're invited into something and that's better than being excluded. I'll tell, we'll get to that in a minute. But you're invited into something where oftentimes the norms and rules are already there. Uh, so it's up to you to adjust into the situation, into the culture, into the practice that you're joining. So that's inclusion. Uh, so you can have inclusion and not have belonging. Um, you could have diversity and not have equity. And so those things are really important. It's important to have diversity, I think for obvious reasons, but it's also important to have equity or some form of sense of fairness, participation, uh, and it's important to have inclusion. As I mentioned, I'm the Director of the Othering and Belonging Institute. And so othering may sound like a funny word, uh, but it's a process that we actually engage in. And so when we basically through processes, structures, dynamics, culture, basically say someone doesn't really belong, that this isn't that person's place, this isn't that person's language, this isn't that person's culture. And at the extreme, we might say, this person doesn't even belong here. Uh, this isn't this place, this person's school, neighborhood, we're, that's the process of othering. Othering in some way is saying the person is less than. They don't have the right to make full um demands on a system. And they certainly don't have the right to make demands in terms of structuring that system. And we can other people based on any number of axes. It can be based on the color of the skin, it could be based on the accent. It could be based on which country they're from. It could be based on um who they choose to love or how they choose to love. So the othering process, like the diversity process, is social. There's no natural othering. We don't naturally other people because they're tall or short, because they're black or white. These processes actually create uh significant meaning to diversity. Sometimes, especially in liberal society, when we hear about people being treated differently because they are parent different, the difference is apparent. It's not always obvious and it's not always real. Uh, but when people are treated differently, sometimes our solution to that is to insist that instead of being other, they're the same. And so we're saying the opposite of othering is belonging, not sameing. So we don't address the issue by reducing everyone to the same. Uh, that's a kind of erasure in and of itself. So Hamas is not just a church with a different name. The synagogue is not just Hamas with a different name. They really are different. Uh, and yet, one could also assert appropriately that they're also similar. So they're both similar and different at the same time. And how, which of those registers can emphasize depends on the practices and culture and structures that we inhabit. So what is belonging if it's not inclusion? Belonging means that you have meaning for participation and you co-create and co-own the very thing you're joining. Uh, so I'm old enough that I remember in the 50s when school integration or desegregation was the buzz. The idea is that you would take black kids or Latinx kid, Latinx kids, and they'd go to white schools. The schools would in some sense still be white, but would have a smattering of black or Latino kids in the school. And the large expectation was the black Latino kids had to adjust, had to adapt in order to fit in. Uh, that's inclusion. But it's certainly not belonging. Belonging is that no group gets to define the structure by itself, no group gets to define the institution by itself. That that's a co-created process. Uh, and those are discussed and negotiated and come to together. In order to co-create, co-own, individuals and groups need dignity, um, both interpersonally and within group culture, and they need power uh in order to participate in the process of constituting or normalizing, of constructing a space, a container, a school. You need power, you need resources. You need voice. So targeted universalism. Um, we've all, we talked about, a little bit about exclusion, which we all are familiar with. And all these practices can be implicit or explicit. Uh, we, for the most part, don't have explicit exclusion anymore. We have a lot of implicit or structural exclusion. But the exclusion or this implicit or explicit basically says, this is not your place, you don't belong here. Uh, and you're excluded. Uh, years ago, I did a study looking at racial profiling, which we don't talk about about much anymore. And some people assumed that people of color were profiled because they, their lives were happening out on the streets. So the idea in terms of drugs was that all communities use drugs at about the same rate, but that in low-income communities of color, the drug use and trade might be on the streets and that's why the police were targeting them. That's, that's logical, but it's largely wrong. Because what we found is that the greatest profiling didn't happen in the black community, Latino community, Asian community or Native community, for that matter. It happened where when groups from one area, particularly marginalized groups from one area, for example, blacks were to travel into white areas, that's when the profiling was the most extreme. So the assumption was, this is not your space and you're very present in this space that's been largely excluded, designed to exclude you. When you come in, we notice and you have to justify why you're there. So that was interesting finding, which we hadn't expected to find when we looked at racial profiling. So the way you address exclusion in part is integration. Instead of saying, you're not allowed in this school, you're not allowed in this neighborhood, what are you doing here? Say, yes, you're part of the school, you're part of this neighborhood, that's integration. I could say more about integration, but I won't for now. Inclusion, uh, similarly is to say, you're part of the space and you're not consigned to a narrow part of the space. You're really part of this space, but it's still this space. Um, so that's inclusion. So how do we move from inclusion to belonging? Belonging says you're joining, or the very constitution of that space redefines the space itself. So you're not just joining something, you're actually co-constituting and co-creating something. It's important to note that belonging is belonging without othering. So as you constitute that space, the aspiration, the goal is to constitute it for everybody as part of a space. Not just for your group, not just for your community, but for all the various communities. You actually are holding those communities, creating a space where everyone belongs and you're attendant to the structure itself. So the path to othering is breaking. Uh, the path to belonging is bridging. I haven't really talked about breaking, I've a little bit about that here. Uh, we, we engage with other people. Uh, there are a couple of moves we can make. One is sometime we see someone and we recognize them as similar ethnic background, similar racial background. And uh, and we tell stories in our head about that person. Some of those stories are true, some of them are not true. But in some sense, we feel a resonance with them. Um, and uh, that's actually um the third concept called bonding. So when we feel a resonance with a group, we feel bonding. Think about your family. Most of us, when we think about our family, not all of us, we have like deep familiarity and a warm fuzzy feeling. We feel bonded with them. We know them and they know us in some way. The, but what about if you see some, a group and you think of the group as a threat? You think the group is there to take something from you, whether it's your culture, your language, your money, your space, whatever, something you value. And sometimes that sense is actually quite ill-defined, that we can't quite picture it. Uh, but we have this in deep discomfort that this group doesn't belong there. And in that feeling or story, there's a sense of us and them and zero sum. Uh, one of us wins, one of us loses. And when we articulate those stories, when we articulate those practices, that that person, that group doesn't belong, that somehow they're a threat to our own belonging, that's called breaking. Like I tell you, the dominant practice today in terms of group interaction in the United States, especially around the axis of race and religion, is breaking. So they're breaking stories that are constantly being told all the time on the media, social media, newspapers, in person, the stories about how bad that other group is and what a threat they are to us or to the American life. But there's another story to be told, and that is, yes, the country's changing. We are becoming more diverse across several different axes. Uh, but there's ability to actually reach across and hear each other, have some shared values, some shared practices, have deep resonance, understanding and compassion. That's called bridging. Um, that's the interesting thing about bridging. Bridging may, all both of these, but bridging may sound very simple. It's actually very complicated and it's actually hard. Uh, because sometime when we bridge, not only will the group we're bridging to not understand why we're there, you're not gay, why are you here? You're not black, why are you here? Uh, you're not white, why are you here? But also, our own group may not understand why we're reaching out to another group. Uh, and so sometimes the group you belong to will limit your ability to bridge other groups and we have to overcome that. And one of the places to overcome that, one of the containers potentially to overcome that, um, are schools. Another potential place is the workplace itself, because the workplace and oftentimes schools, not all the time, throw us together with people who we, in different contexts, may think of as quite different. So bridging is about joining people together and it's about telling stories. It's not just telling stories, it's also about listening, listening to the other person's story and listening, not just with your mind, but also with your body, with your heart. Uh, all of us have stories. Uh, the word compassion is, comes from uh the words passion and come, passion meaning suffering, and come with, to suffer with, to listen someone to someone's sorrows. What we know in terms of research is that deep listening to someone's struggles and sorrows creates greater empathy and engagement than happy stories, if you will. Uh, so are we willing to listen to someone else's story? And when we do that, we are not just listening to someone, we're actually in the process of creating belonging and larger we. So bridging is a process of creating larger we. So bridging is a process of creating a larger we. Who is we, the people? In the Constitution. In some ways, America has been struggling over that question since its very inception. But we also need a person, a group, to show up with dignity and power in order to effectively participate in this process. So go back to Maslow's contact theory. Excuse me, I asked about Alfred's contact theory, The Nature of Prejudice. He talks about when you can bring groups together under right conditions, you create, you decrease prejudice. And today, he might say, you increase bridging and a larger we. Those conditions that have to come in as relative equals with a shared vision. So breaking is just the opposite. Breaking is where we see the other person as a threat in a binary. That if they win, we necessarily lose. And so, at a minimum, I would say for first five and all of us, is think about the stories we tell, the practices we engage in, the policies we support, and to run them through a sieve. Is this a breaking or bridging practice that we're engaged in? So we've already covered a lot. And I just want to go back and sort of look at this in terms of timeframe. If we go back a couple hundred years, and that's a long time ago, but not long ago at all, the whole world was organized around extreme inequality. We wouldn't even necessarily call it inequality because equality was not one of the watchwords. We actually talked about and experienced people as being hierarchically related. They were masters and servants and slaves. There was royalty and common folks. And we assumed, in many cases, not only was this the case, that this was preordained by higher being. So kings and queens and royalty were assumed to be close to God. And that's how the whole world was organized. And then we started engaging with something different. We started engaging with the idea of equality. And a little dispute on this, but the general concept of equality probably has two sources in America. One being the Greeks by way of France. So Thomas Jefferson spent a lot of time in France. And the French were grappling with the same concepts. And here in the colonies, there were Native American tribes themselves who had concepts of equality that also informed the Europeans. So equality, its first major expression in modern history came from the United States and France. And in many ways, borrowed from both Native people, but also borrowed from the Greeks. And no one goes back and read the Greeks, but it really came from Aristotle. Aristotle's concept of equality is quite sophisticated. It's not what we talk about today. He basically had this thing where he said fairness and equality demands that you treat people who are situated the same, the same. Fairness and equality demands that you treat people who are situated differently, different. That's the second piece the United States struggles with. We got one half of what Aristotle was saying, which is called arithmetic equality. But the second half, which is called geometric equality, was largely missed. And geometric equality is really what equity is. Equity is, so it's going back in a sense. These may seem like very new ideas, but they have their roots in thousands of years. We've forgotten that. So let's say we're trying to have people look over a fence. Well, formal equality or arithmetic equality said, treat everybody the same. But if everybody got the same stool, or if nobody got a stool, the person on the right could still look over the stool, look over the fence because they're standing on a mound. The other two people could not. And so equity says, look at the differences and be aware of those differences in terms of how we resource people, how we treat them. Targeted universalism, which is where I'm trying to nut you to today, goes one step further. Targeted universalism, so equity looks at the difference between groups. And so a lot of equity is, let's address the difference between the two groups. Let's look at the disparities, which is an important look. But it's only partially, a partial look, and we think of it as the whole thing. So much of the work becomes, how do we close the disparity between one group, which is usually considered the favorite group, and another group, which is used to consider the marginal group? That becomes virtually all of our work in terms of equity. And I'll talk about this in a minute. But that approach creates a zero-sum game oftentimes, and actually ends up supporting breaking instead of bridging. So how is targeted universalism different? Targeted universalism is predicated on a notion. And let me just say one other thing about equity. In that formulation, we pick one group to focus on and largely ignore the other groups, except maybe the favorite group. And in that case, we not only not ignore them, but we say we oftentimes have to take them down a notch. We may have to take some of their resources and redistribute them. Well, you can imagine, if you're in that group, you hear that with fear and trepidation. So targeted universalism is about, first of all, it's not simply looking at people. You're not saying, okay, yes, one group has more than another group. But it's not because that group who has more is bad. When we get on a bus and ride it to work or downtown, we most of the time don't notice if the bus can actually accommodate someone who has what we call a disability. So it doesn't make us a bad person to get on the bus. But there's a structure, a structural interaction between us and the bus that's not available to a different group. So part of the focus of targeted universalism is to focus, refocus our attention on the work that structures are doing. And I'll come back to that in a minute. But to say more, the goal in targeted universalism is not to achieve what the favorite group has. The goal in targeted universalism is a universal goal that's based independently of what any group has. So in terms of school, you might say, we want all student learners to be reading ready to the extent possible by the third grade. It's not saying we want students to read at the same rate as their white counterparts or as their middle-class counterparts. If we set that universal goal, we're likely to find that every group is short of the goal. But some groups are going to be a little short. Some groups are going to be a long way from it. So we look at how groups are situated within the structure, within the culture, and in relationship to that goal. So again, equity is focused on just closing the gap. But targeted universalism is saying, the gap is important, but the major gap that we want to focus on is not between two different groups, but between that universal goal and where people are. And that makes it equity 2.0. But we have to take time. And my understanding is that you've already done this in the past at first five. You've done some, you may not have named it this, but you've done some targeted universalism work. But first develop the universal goal. Identify where groups are in relationships to that goal. And then adopt targeted strategies to get not just the most marginal group, but every group to that universal goal. Notice if you achieve that, or when you achieve that, you've also erased the disparities. But now you're not only to erase the disparities between groups, but disparities between groups and that universal goal. This is a rendition of what you've already seen. The reason that this, if you look on the left, you'll see some rendition. But what the left actually does is it focuses on the height of the people. So in this situation, you're largely to implicitly assume if the person can't see over the fence, it's his or her fault, it's their fault. Right? As opposed to, how do we? So then the thing is, how do we fix marginalized groups so they can see over the fence? As opposed to, what's the structure that groups are living in? And what work are the structures doing? So instead of oftentimes fixing people, we want to fix the structures themselves. I've been doing this work for a while now. And what I can say is that it's hard oftentimes for groups to hold on to both the targeted and the universal intervention. Groups that tend to be more activists veer toward the targeted approach. Groups that tend to be more policy veer toward more the universal. But either one of them by themselves is woefully inadequate. So the concept targeted universalism may sound like a wonky concept. Most of you may not have heard of it. But you have heard of targeted strategies. You have heard of universal strategies. And so what we've done is sort of put these two things together. And like hydrogen and oxygen, when you put hydrogen and oxygen together, you don't get hydrogen and oxygen, you get water. You get something completely different that was unanticipated. And what I want to suggest to you is the water to hydrogen and oxygen. Targeted universalism creates something quite different. And it creates not only a policy intervention, a way to organize policy and goals, but it also creates a communication, a way of talking about things, a way of telling stories that value everyone. So why are the universal's thought paths short? There are many reasons. They fail to recognize our interconnectedness of policy issues. They fail to recognize the way in which groups are differently situated based on history and systemic exclusion and subordination. So again, it's like, I'm going to treat everybody the same. I literally lived in Florida when there's, I think it was the Super Bowl coming to Florida, and they passed some rule in a number of municipalities, no more public urination. And the rule was to apply to everyone. Well, if you're housed, the rule may be slightly inconvenient, probably not though. If you're unhoused, the rule becomes impossible to even adhere to. It's not recognizing that people are situated differently. The rule in this face looks neutral. We're treating everybody the same, but in fact, it's quite different. You've heard of the expression, rising tide lifts our boats. And I used to have a slide after Katrina, which is a true slide of people in a car that were sinking. And we have to recognize that while this sounds good, it's simply not true. In part because not everyone has a boat. And the rising tide is going to drown some people while it lifts others. So what about targeted strategies? Where targeted strategies acknowledge that there's systematic harm and that people are maybe situated differently. But it creates competition. When you focus on one group, another group is like, what about me? And it's not adequate to say, well, this group suffered more than you. You know, I have children, and I'm sure many of you do as well. My children are grown, they have one grandchild. And if I ever, I'm in a space with you, I'd love to get to know you and hear about your children. But at the end of the day, if you don't want to hear about my children, my interest in your children is going to probably wane. So people only stay in something if they feel like, in a sense, their group, their bonded group is also being considered. And targeted strategies oftentimes are not seen that way. What we try to do is convince people why it's okay to focus on group A and not group B. And I think that's a hard sell and frankly, an unnecessary sell. So the focus needs to be to transform society and to transform the systems and make sure that everyone, that everyone can actually reach those universal. So here are just some things, again, reminding us that we should pay attention to the structure. When someone comes up on an escalator, they don't think about, I'm a bad person because I'm riding an escalator. In order to think the person who designed this escalator dislike people in wheelchairs. But the reality is, whether there's any animosity or not, that structure, the escalator, doesn't serve the person in the wheelchair. If you then say, let's build an elevator, which are expensive, because some people are in a wheelchair, some people will object. Why is this person getting special pleading? Everybody else is getting on the escalator and this person wants an expensive elevator. But that's failing to see that structures do work. And in that work, they're normalized or biased in favor of some groups and not other groups. And when the groups that are not being served by those structures make that known, it may seem like a special pleading. But the story which has to be told is that the goal is to get everybody from floor A to floor B. How we do that is going to vary because people are situated differently in relationship to those structures. That's targeted universalism. So how do we apply targeted universalism? There are five steps and probably more. But here are the five that you should at least start with. Articulate the goal. Look at the difference between the population and that goal. Use data to assess particular geographies, places, population segments that diverge from the goal. Assess barriers to achieve the goal and create targeted processes for each group to get to that goal. And I can actually speak to each one of those. But let me just say two things. One, it's not just removing barriers. You're developing goals to do something. So you want to affirmatively create goals that will get every group to that universal. Again, not just removing barriers. That process of just removing barriers assumes that we can get to the place where structures are neutral. We're not designing structures to be neutral. We're designing them to do something. And they're doing it differently for different groups. So how do we design a structure to make sure that each group gets to that universal? Some of you may be asking, how do you decide the universal? Well, sometimes it's implicit or already understood. But deciding the universal itself, going back to belonging, means co-creating. That is, I don't decide the universal for another group. They don't decide it for me. We have to come together and co-create what that universal is. So with that, I'll stop sharing and open it up for questions, comments, and reflection.
Thank you very much, John. Thank you very much, Evan and Antoinette. I'm certain that people have been, you know, madly scribbling notes or writing down thoughts that they've had that they want to bring up. So everybody take a deep breath. And John has invited us to ask questions or make comments. And I, let's see. Linda texted me that Frank Ramos has his hand up. So Frank, let's go to you first.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. I work, so I work for LA County DCFS. I'm a manager. And we've been talking about implicit bias and equity for quite some time now, maybe three, four, five years. And we've made a concerted effort to sort of slow down the way that we react to each other and to families and to really take a look at our own biases as we walk through the door, so to speak. Targeted universalism, it's the first time I've ever heard it. And for me, it's profound. I'm like, oh, my goodness. Because when you mentioned, for example, with equity, that if you have a group that is identified for resources, for example, that there is some, there will be others who may say, wait a minute, what's going on here? What about group A as well? It just, I really appreciate what you shared because it makes me think more about obviously providing groups what they need, you know, via equity, but also making sure that we have a target so that everyone hopefully gets to that goal. I just think, for me, it's eye-opening because we've been working really, really hard at DCFS. I think we're doing a pretty good job. But this just makes me really focus more on learning more and on trying to do even, an even better job as we go out there and assess for child abuse and neglect. So I just want to thank you. It's really making me just think more and more about how to do a better job and how to learn more too. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Frank, let me just share a couple of things with you. First of all, probably all of you have heard of implicit bias. I'm the one who sort of actually brought implicit bias to the public discourse. And I started something called American Values Institute about 15 years ago. And now it's changed to Perception Institute. And my goal was to take this work of implicit bias, Marjorie Benage, Anthony Greenwald, the two people who sort of. Came a early version of this and bring it to the world, bring it, so get it out of the academy and get it out into the world. Like a lot of things, it is, we've had, on that level, we've had success. And it's part of a larger castile called mind science. And, but it's also been misapplied. Unfortunately, people think of implicit bias as what's located in an individual. And so a lot of the work implicit, and I'll be explicit, what I'm saying is that. What we're dealing with is not simply bad individuals. It's not to fix, so where does implicit bias come from? Implicit, and there's a debating academy and all that, you know, we like to argue about everything. But basically implicit bias comes from structures outside the individual. What implicit bias is the unconscious becoming deeply habituated. And it becomes habituated by interacting with the external environment. So most of the stuff in terms of implicit bias is not what's happening here, it's what's happening in the world. And, and most of the work on implicit bias is like, let me fix what's in your head. Which is the wrong focus and it's wrong focus for a number of reasons. And I won't go into great detail. You didn't ask me to talk about implicit bias, but Frank, your question was, or your statement was so important. The thing of you saying, slow down. And so one of the interventions, you know, and I, I don't do implicit bias training much anymore, but I say, we're biased against bias. We actually cannot get rid of bias. We can actually push it in different directions. We can massage it. But to think is to actually engage in bias. We, the conscious mind is very, very, very slow. The unconscious mind is super fast. So you can slow the conscious mind down, but you can't, you can't slow the unconscious mind down enough. And evolutionary biologists will tell you that if you could, you would die. So yes, when we're under stress, when we have to make fast decisions, they're more likely. The book Think Fast and Slow, you're more likely to make mistakes. If you're doing it by yourself instead of on a team, you're more likely to make mistakes. If you think about it in terms of not having diverse team. And one way you notice bias is, I would say, and then I'll leave it at this, and sorry to go on with this, is patterns. The note, the way you notice biases is when there's a systematic pattern. And if you, I'm sure many of you have taken the Harvard Implicit Association test. What you see in that test, which is interesting, which most people don't pay attention to, is that even a targeted group has biases against itself. Right? Because they are interacting with the same environment. They, so I'm not opposed to implicit bias training, I think is real. But I think it's limited if you don't pay attention to the external environment as well.
That was great, thank you. And I just wanted to add one last thing. Talked about bridging. And, you know, listening to, it's, it sounds so, for me, it sounds so basic, listening to other people's stories. That is profound. When you learn a little bit about somebody, I mean, it really, really engenders, generally it engenders. You know, a desire and motivation to just work, I think, better together and to help. So I just want to thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Ramalis, you're next.
I want to thank you for the insightful concepts that you're presenting. But I also want to talk about systems barriers that create the well-intended to do something. But in reality, it creates the inequities. It creates the less of inclusion since it was never developed by the people it proposes to serve. So the end result is it doesn't achieve the goal by design, even though it is professing to do so. The end result is we detain all these children when, in fact, the huge issue is about, for most of these kids, poverty. Lack of resources, things of that nature. This is just one example of a semi about health. When we have a health system, it's designed for certain cultures. And other cultures, it does not include their, their systemic barriers and by issues to properly help them. Prime example is the black and African disparities that go on in birth. Reality. Even though the system is professing to do it, it is not doing it because it's not dealing with the structure you talk about. What is the inconsistencies and what the needs are of the people? So this is a huge jump for everything, even though the team is trying to do it integrating within itself. Which is a heck of a good start. But when you get outside of what we're trying to do and trying to spread it to our collaborative partners, that's going to be a major hurdle to jump. Because the system itself will protect itself. Because it assumes that it's doing its job because of all the policy, procedure, and practices and benchmarks it put up. And not how it's serving the people and the failure that it's having in serving those people. So the end result is it is chaos. And so the end result is we're not achieving all that we say we're doing. Because we're not dealing with the human element that you're talking about at the end result. And if we started there and talked about, okay, where is this not helping people? And how can we change the system to better help people? And it should be at every point that we contact those people that we should evaluate, is the system there? Doing the things you're talking about with equity, inclusion, targeted universalism and things like that. And that's a huge jump because the system never analyzes itself to whether it's achieving a goal or not. It's always you're dealing with the outcomes of what they're doing and not how the system is failing. And what it needs to change to do better. And I'm just, I just, I, I hear what you're saying, but that next hurdle is going to be major. In going and getting our collaborative partners to engage it in the willingness of the system to change it. Because you've got laws, then you've got policy, procedure, and practice. The Fed's level, state level, and local level, you've got to overcome to say how you actually do what you do to help people. So sometimes that's hard because the system doesn't want to change itself. Because that means you've got to reflect on what you're doing and say, yeah, I'm failing and this is what I'm going to do to correct it. You know what I'm saying?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so that's, that's the hard job. And it's not taking a negative because the system is designed to try to do this. But no one is asking the question, is it doing it and how is it doing it and what needs to be changed?
Right. You're exactly right. I mean, that is beautifully stated. I'll just add a few punctuation points. So targeted universalism is not concerned with inputs. It's concerned with outputs, exactly for the reason you said. Oftentimes when we try to do something, we say, okay, you know, kids are not learning, you know, maybe we gave them more money. Maybe we paid the teachers more, maybe we may smaller classroom. I'm not saying any of those things necessarily bad, but I'm saying those are inputs. You have to measure outputs. And the reason I was trying to pull us away from just focusing on, is that person a racist? Is that person insensitive? It's like, maybe, maybe not. But it's not the person, as you said, it's the system. And the way you know if a system is working are the outcomes, not the intention. You know, so we put this system in place to do X. Great, is it doing it? That's what I want to know. And then we say, no, because, okay, stop. You don't have to, we can get to the because later. You said, no. It is not delivering. Now we have to figure out, we have to engineer the system so it delivers. And that might mean tinkering here, it might mean doing more than tinkering. The other thing, you've actually touched on a lot of things. So from your conversation, I'm sure you're aware of systems theory. So system theory is that there's no unintended consequences in system theory. You look at what a system is doing, not, oh, that was an unintended cost, it's doing it. We don't, we don't turn the system into a human being and say, is this a bad system because it's mean to do something bad to people? It's doing it, that's, it's doing it, so change it. The other thing is systems, because systems are, are in relationship with other institutions and systems, is dynamic. So think about years ago, when they made money available for schools to reduce class size. Black and Latino legislators pushed for literally billions of dollars to reduce class size in California. The goal was not really to reduce, reduce class size. The goal was to produce better outcomes for the students. Particularly the black and Latino students and the low income students. So literally the state, you know, good people said, okay, so high class size is a problem. If we reduce class size, wouldn't that solve the problem? Well, some of you may know what happened. The money was passed, they reduced the class size. And the result was experienced teachers left the black and brown community to go to the suburbs. Because you increase the demand for teachers and now teachers have options they didn't have before. And so now you have smaller classrooms, but inexperienced teachers. And the outcome for the black and Latino students was net zero or even negative. That wasn't the intention. So, you know, you assume that this input, and it's irrational, but you're not looking at the dynamic nature of systems. So yes, there's a lot of complexity that I skipped over and I'm glad you brought it, brought it back to it. But the thing is to be oriented that way and say, and you can do that. And then this is the last I'll say, and then I open for other questions or comments. You can do that without blaming any person. It's not saying so and so is a racist and that's why it happened. And I often say, I don't know, I'm, I'm, you know, that's not my focus. My focus is the outcome is not being achieved. This person may be doing all they can do. This person may be a saint. But if you have a system and you're not engaging in that system, even a saint in that position is not going to produce the outcomes you want. So, and instead of what we do is we oftentimes beat up on the person. Well, look at, look at the principal or superintendent, they've been superintendent there for five years and black students haven't done any better. Yeah, that may be true. But to impugn that person's moral character is extremely problematic. And it takes us back into an extreme kind of breaking. And I think we have to engage these issues of race, ethnicity, background. But we have to do it without breaking, without assuming that it's happening simply because some people. And that's what, when I started off in terms of implicit bias. Implicit bias invites us to identify the bias in the person, not the bias in the system.
Thank you. Thank you, Ramalis. Thank you, John. Next on the list, I have Carol.
I just wanted to thank you both, Ramalis and also John, because it was really engaging. You both kind of covered what I thought was important, so thanks. Thank you.
All right. I have no further names on the list as raising their hands. Linda or do your Judy see anyone else who wants to speak before I do?
I see Astrid's hand just went up.
Okay, Astrid, go ahead.
John, that was completely amazing. I'm, I'm a child abuse doctor in LA. And I'm going to pose to you, I'm into it in terms of outcomes. I actually am trying very hard to look at creating clinics where we actually address. The, the nature of being raised black or brown or immigrant or non-English speaking in Los Angeles. I'm very interested in that. I would love to talk to you offline about the impact on the African-American child in our country of alcohol. And a fetal alcohol spectrum disorder, because we can't put them into the same pool of trajectory outcomes. If we in fact have poisoned their brains so that they have to go a different track. And the, maybe what we should discuss offline is how do we begin to impact fixing that from the get-go? And how do we address treating children who have had, to no fault of their own. Lived in an environment that is certainly being created by racism and all the other things that have gone into it in this country. But now they're brain damaged and we got to figure out how to get them to a goal that keeps them out of the criminal justice system. And, and we're the only site in like, in California that diagnoses and treats this population. And we're beginning to try to work on innovation, but I am, I want better. And I, and I've worked with, with Ramos for a long time and talking about how do we work with DCFS? And Ramalis and I are on the same page most weeks that we have meetings. And the idea that, that there is this cesspool. That we've put kids in predominantly minorities, a lot of them black. And we ask them then to achieve if we give them a chance.
Right, right.
And, yeah, just do what I'm saying.
No, I'd love to talk to you about it. And then I don't know if we can do it before then, but I'm talking to Health and Human Services at the federal level in two or three weeks. And, and this is, do all the research for the federal government on these issues. But you're absolutely right. I mean, we, we, we don't acknowledge that people are, you know, and I think of lead paint. I think of all the different things that we, we, we do to kids and we do it oftentimes in a racialized way. And then we say, now go, you know?
Right. I'm going to put my, my phone number in the chat area, maybe you can go to that. I'm, everybody at, at first five is sick of me talking about this. But unless we identify it and really talk about it as a root cause of, of, of inevitable bad outcomes for certain populations. And begin to change the inevitability of it. And begin to look at what we have to do and that we have to acknowledge it. And, and identify it and, and begin to look at. Because what I see happening and really troubles me is that because they look at data or they look at outcomes. They never, they never think about the ideology of why they're going to get a bad outcome. And so they say, well, why bother? I mean, that's just a bad black kid. So I'm going to put my number in the chat room and, oh, it says Linda's going to do that for me. That's great, thanks, Linda. Because I'm, I think we have to join forces. And begin to talk about it.
One, one person who's a friend of mine, who's, he's head of the Brain Institute at UCSF, Bruce Miller. I don't know if you know Bruce. He's, he's brilliant, he's, and I, you know, I'm not a brain doctor, he is. And we were given a presentation together and mainly doctors and psychiatrists and people of that ilk. And someone asked, and someone asked me a question, Professor Powell, you keep focusing on race. We're here to talk about the brain. The brain is in essence colorblind, right? There's no white brain and black brain, it's just pain, it's the organ. And I said, that's exactly wrong. And as I'm taken aback, it's like, what are you saying? I said, the brain is responding to the environment. And.
Exactly.
And we have different experiences for different populations. And that actually structures some, you know. Not only toxic in the brain, but literally the structure of the brain. And, and then people turned to Dr. Miller. Because it sounded like I was contradicting him. And he said, what about that, Dr. Miller? Because he's the one who said, it's just a brain, it's not a. He's right. And I said, I'm, I'm interpreting your research. This is not my research, this is your research. And we became fast friends and we're still good friends. But the point that you're making, said, if you, once you create through an environment, the conditions that we could call a black brain. It's actually going to perform differently, not because it was born differently, but because all the inputs, all the structures, all the situation. And if we're going to rescue that or change that, we have to focus on it.
And we're working on that. I can remember seeing, sitting at an international meeting on child abuse and neglect, and this one was in New Zealand. And listening to Bruce Perry, who's brilliant and I really like who he is, et cetera, talking. But he was, well, before we ever talked about FASD, he was talking about the fact that kids in foster care have smaller brains than kids that don't put in foster care. And he was talking in such a way that you listen to the social workers in the room and they were like, why bother? You know, if, if you're, because he never really thought about the fact that the reason the brain looked different was because it was such a high. A level of kids born with FASD. So please, please contact me. I think you're brilliant. I think what you have to say is spot on and it's real. It's talking about really what happens, not wishful thinking. And, and it's only with, when we have people that identify that, that we're going to bring change. And so thank you for that, I really appreciate it.
I don't know, thank you for your work.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak? Raise their hands, Linda or Judy, do you see?
I see Ramalis's hand up again.
Ramalis, second thoughts?
Yeah. I just want to say that what is unique about what we're doing is trying to not only recognize these things, but change systems. And we modeled it. What is great about this operation and organization and the teams and the managers and leaders here. Is that we not only try to deal with what we do internal, but we try to change systems. That and, and to create and handle. And we do modeling of these concepts to prove it works and we capture data to prove that it works. But it's a. But it's a whole family and a whole condition. And the ultimate goal is to hear what the people say. What I like about your drawing is with the little boxes, is that you meet the people with where they are and you allow for that adjustment in the system to do it. But we also have a tolerance that says nothing is perfect and we can move and change and evolve to improve it. And that's what I like about what we do here. And so I'm hoping that you will help us get that so that we can communicate to the systems that are not partners in this of how we can change the policy, procedure, and practice and legislation to enhance the outcomes and integrate the whole community in this change. Thank you.
I look forward to it. And Evan's there working with you guys. You have a wonderful researcher at your hand and I'm looking forward to continuing this relationship.
Thank you. Anyone else with their hand up?
At this moment, I don't see anyone else's hands up.
All right. Then I'll take the chair's prerogative and go last. Most of my commissioners and certainly my friends know that all my life I've been a science fiction aficionado. And one of the books that I have constantly referred to when I was doing trainings about, you know, what we used to call gender bias or even earlier women's issues was Ursula K. L. Guin's Left Hand of Darkness. And it's something that I think was not raised in your presentation because you're talking to us about what we can do. And that is what good people or people who take responsibility to move us in a better direction will do. But what Ursula K. L. Guin said in The Left Hand of Darkness, and it's interesting to me because the left hand is always thought, of course, to be worse than the right hand. Which is why we use words like sinister, which is Latin for left, or gauche, which is French for left. And also darkness, which I don't even have to explain. But what she said in, and I'll water it down a lot, and she said it a lot better, was different and same are good words. They're growing words. They're educating words. They're words that help us see someone else is not like us, but isn't that cool? When I was growing up, my mother, we had only a small pot to cook spaghetti in. So she cooked, she cut up the spaghetti to put it in the pot. And that's how I thought spaghetti was supposed to be cooked. So when I went next door and ate spaghetti, I thought they did it all wrong. I mean, the strands were way too long. You had to use a fork and a spoon and I, you know, really. But it was fun. Same and different were good and growing words. What Ursula K. L. Guin said are the killing words are better and worse. And that, I think, is what we have been
Could you repeat that again?
The, the killing words are better and worse. That is, it's not about whether you're different. That we look at in society and that all the things that you've talked about, we are needing to recognize, I think, the sort of serious barriers that were created by those who benefit from a lack of equity or a lack of equality, as we used to say in the old days. And that is the issue of better and worse. That is, you know, I'm a lesbian and certainly I was told that I was worse most of my life. And I, and it was enforced by society in that I, you know, I couldn't marry. I might be arrested. I might be beat up at one of my bars, whatever. So it was better and worse. And so taking into account somehow that there are people who will benefit and have benefited by a hierarchy of better and worse. And that is what I think we've been struggling against in talking about all of these systems. I have two more things to say before I turn it back to you, John, if I may. Those people who benefit from creating mythologies about which divisions are better and which are worse also work very hard to maintain those. They create stories about the other. How bad they are. I mean, we've seen a whole wave of antisemitism in the country and old myths about Jews, you know, poisoning the water or wanting to take over all of commerce or whatever that we have seen over the years. And certainly, we all know the stories about our own groups that are spread that are untrue. But that make it easier to, to discriminate or to hold back. And finally, what you said is very interesting about both the Greek and the French approach about especially where you would treat those who are similarly situated similarly. We saw the greatest failure of that when Ruth Bader Ginsburg brought her cases to the Supreme Court about gender discrimination. Because, as you know, in the American Constitution, there's the equal protection clause. And equal protection is only triggered as a, as a claim where you have two things that are similarly situated not being treated the same. And the first time gender cases came to the Supreme Court, Ruth Bader Ginsburg lost. Because the court said, men and women are not similarly situated. Thank you, counsel. Please go home. So it didn't even trigger the application of the equal protection clause. So I think the point I want to ask is, given the fact that with digital manipulation spreading so many stories about the other, about, you know, really creating fear, I think. And the fact that better and worse is still very much with us in the way people think about things. How shall we, as those who want to make real all the things that you've brought to us and are teaching us, how should we deal with that?
Those are really great questions. And, and if I had an answer, and I'm not claiming I do. I certainly couldn't do it in three minutes or five minutes, but let me throw out a couple of thoughts.
Thank you.
The research suggests that, starting with people like Maslow, that the need to belong is so fundamental that people, not just people, but other mammals crave the need to belong. And so this system, this, this phony system of hierarchy, which we have, which is interesting. I was talking to some people in Appalachia, you know, basically all white. Men died on average fifty, at fifty. Nobody had, no one over twenty-five had their front teeth. As my grandmother would say, they didn't have a pot to piss in or one to throw it out of. And this was multi-generational. This wasn't something that just happened. This was happening decade after decade, generation after generation. And I said, they have a descriptor for you. They don't call you white. They call you white trash. So how are you benefiting from this system? And I, you know, and I was, and I, you know, Evan can tell you, I was straight with him. I said, I would trade places with you. You know, you're, what whiteness does for you is so minimal. So why do you even bother calling yourself white? What I'm suggesting is that many Americans who identify as white actually are in a only slightly better situation than the people in Appalachia. The anxiety, I was in Milwaukee, Wisconsin. I was giving a talk and a major plant was closing there. They're going to lay out something like four thousand people. And there were three Latino students who had been led into the university. And there was a big demonstration against affirmative action. And I said, you know, I was talking to people who would listen. You know what? You can keep those three people out of University of Wisconsin or not. It's not going to make a difference in your life. That plant closing, that's going to wreck your communities. And there's not one person demonstrating against the plant closure. You're focusing on the wrong thing. And so, in a sense, I would say the people who think they're benefiting from this hierarchy from the ideology of white male supremacy are actually suffering as well. And many of them are trying to find, not all of them, but many of them are trying to find a way out. And we haven't given them a way out. And so I think there's some very interesting data. The data suggests that there are more white Americans who support in a real way, whatever that means, racial equality than every, at every time in U.S. history. Where do they go? How do they get involved? Oftentimes, when we do racial justice movements, we actually consign them to the closet. We tell them they can be allies, but they can't talk. We tell them that until they can admit that they're part of a flawed race, they can't be human. We tell them that, you know, they were slave masters and most of them were serfs and barely above slaves themselves. So in some ways, we actually push them away. And, and I think from my perspective, the recognition that we're all valuable. The Declaration of Independence almost got it right. It said, we hold these truths to be self-evident. And then it went on, then it kind of screwed it up. Thomas Jefferson couldn't quite do it. He said, all men are created equal. We hold it to be self-evident. You don't have to prove it. You don't have to demonstrate it. We hold it to be self-evident. That's a radical concept. And I can't say men, but people. But I think America and most Americans are deeply conflicted by Thomas Jefferson's claim, which he got from the French. And at the same time, the claim that women and people of color, blacks, Native Americans were not real people. We are struggling with that both internally. And I think, I think we have to tell a better story. We have to create better bridges. We have to offer that to the country in a real way. And it's never been done before. And I think if we do that, we will see a number of people who are identified as white, who think they're getting something out of this will be drifting back over to belonging. Because the, the, the sort of vitriol of walking around hating everybody, being afraid of everybody. I mean, if you look at any indicator in terms of our health, in terms of how long we live, we're always near the middle. We're never at the top with all the money we have. So something's, and that's not just people of color. That's white people too. Something's not working.
Well, it's interesting, your concept, your discussion about allies. Because that is another way, I think, that we, my grandmother used to say, you know, you cut off your nose to spite your face. Where you really are kind of leaving something behind. When I, I was the only gay person in the legislature for a while. And when I brought a bill and there was a three-hour debate about how horrible gay people were, one by one, my straight colleagues drifted over to my chair and stood behind me. One, you know, with their hand on my shoulder, one just, they were just like a kind of a little wall. And it was so powerful. I mean, it took us six years to get the first bill through, but still, it was quite amazing. And I think our recognition of allies in this whole arena is also really important. Because it's not just a hand across or a hand down, but also, you know, that hand that's reaching out for you. So, John, I thank you so much. This has been such a thoughtful presentation and so useful to our work for the depth of our own understanding and our own approach. And I, I know that these, the principles in this approach will be very, very helpful to us. And I thank you so much just for the new aspects and takes on things that we're already deeply engaged with. And I want to thank you, Evan, very much. I want to thank you, Antoinette, for engaging them with us and to you, Kim and John, as well. So those were my thoughts. I didn't see anybody else with a, with a hand up or a last thought. I don't want to cut anyone off.
I currently don't see any other hands up.
All right. This has been a really, really, I, I can't even find all the right words that would be big enough. You know, interesting, inspiring, informing, lots of things to start with I. Gay, especially this last piece of it. So I thank everyone who's been here for the board meeting. Everyone who has participated in any of the development of this material, this approach, these tenets. And especially for working together. Because I think that's really the only way we're going to get there at the end. So thank you very much for the presentation. The last item on our agenda is public comment on items not on the agenda. Linda, do you see anyone who wishes to participate in public comment?
There are currently no public comments.
All right. Then my deepest thanks to all of you. I always enjoy these meetings so much. And this meeting is adjourned and I'll see you in March.
Thank you all. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, everybody. Bye-bye.